Yes, ma'am. I just give Ann a chance to get on the line.
Okay. Hi Danielle.
Hello.
We're just waiting on Ann and then we'll have a quorum.
So I see, I see Ann's phone number. I just have to admit her. I don't know why it's still on there.
Okay.
Ann, can you hear us?
Um, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm trying to help Phil get on now. It's seven five one. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, it is six thirty-two, December first, 2020. We will now start the meeting.
Demetrius told me he was gonna be on, so you might, somebody might wanna text him if they can. I can't do it while I'm on the phone.
Well, I sent a text to everyone and you responded and he was included in that text. So we have a quorum, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Hopefully he'll join as well as Commissioner Armashay. So hopefully everyone received the agenda, amended agenda. Um, I do need to make one adjustment. So.
I apologize, Chair Wheatley. Commissioner Givens says he's on, but I don't see him, that I need to let him in. I don't see him on. Okay, wait a minute.
Is it Designer Services? Is he DG Designer, DG Designer Services? That's probably Demetrius, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm here. Sorry.
Yeah, Armashay, we're, we're ready. We're trying to get started. We have a quorum.
Okay.
I think everyone's on now.
We have a quorum. Okay, again, it is six thirty-four, December first. And we will be starting our work session. I do need to make one adjustment to the agenda. Will, um, Mr. Pinkney be joining us, Consuela?
He should. I'm not sure why he's not on the line. I'll log on mute and.
Okay. So the one, uh, one amendment that I'm gonna make. Sorry. The one amendment I want to make to the agenda is I need to add Public Works after the TREC grant. So there'll be one item that Public Works will be presenting tonight. Other than that, we will go ahead and get started. And first on our agenda tonight is the Cottage City Garden user agreement.
You wanna call the roll?
Oh yeah, I forgot. Sorry, guys. Roll call Ward one.
Uh, Commissioner Young, present.
Ward two.
Present.
Ward three is present. Ward four.
Commissioner Givens, present.
At large. At large, are you on mute? Did we lose? Oh, Consuela, can you make me a co-host? And probably. Commissioner Yuri, are you there?
I think, oh, she's muted. It shows on the screen.
She says she's present.
I'm sorry, did you say something? Okay, we're gonna, Commissioner Yuri is pregnant.
Yeah, Commissioner Givens was saying that she said she's present. She texted the group chat saying that she's present.
Okay.
Uh, her computer is, she's having computers issues, so.
Okay. We're gonna go now to our first item on our agenda, which is, again, Cottage City Garden user agreement waiver and release form. So at our last meeting, I believe, we discussed, um, the ordinance, we discussed the user agreement, we discussed the waiver and release form, and so, um, after that discussion, I had a, um, additional discussion with a few of the gardeners, specifically Diana Gillespie and Brittany Drakeford. And I believe Diana is on tonight. Yes, I see.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right, so, um, earlier I sent out an email to Ms. Barber explaining, um, the discussion that I had with the gardeners and their concerns in regards to the user agreement, which I, based on their concerns, after reading the user agreement, I totally understood their concerns. And so, um, a compromise was reached and we wanted to present it tonight to the commission to see if, um, everyone would be in agreement to the compromise. So instead of having a user agreement with one or two specific gardeners between the town and the garden, we suggest not having a user agreement, but to replace the user agreement with the waiver and release form and that each individual gardener that wishes to participate would have to sign the release and, um, the waiver and release form. In addition to that, they would sign the application to join the garden. And in addition to that, they will receive a copy of the garden ordinance, which, um, states what the responsibilities and obligations are for the town and the garden as a partnership. And so, the garden agreed to make, um, a few, to update the application to include the ordinance number and to include the obligations and rules and, and regulations per our ordinance of, um, twenty twenty dash oh-three. So I think we have a good compromise. Um, I'm okay with it. I wanted to give the, the gardeners an opportunity tonight to present their concerns and, and compromise again. But I just wanted to give you guys, um, a little bit more information. I know that the email I sent probably didn't give enough detail, but I tried to give as much as I could. And since we do have, um, one of the gardeners here that was in the meeting with me, I'll let Diana explain any additional concerns that they had, because there were several concerns in that user agreement that just were, in their opinion, and again, I agree, it put a lot of burden on the gardeners versus not much on the, on the town. And it made it seem like they were separate from the, from the town and that they were, we were like their landlord and they were a tenant and it just wasn't, it just seemed over, to me, it was over the top. I think it was a little bit too much in that user agreement. So, um, I'm gonna let Diana step in on this part now, if she's willing.
Yeah, and. Thank you, Commissioner Wheatley. Uh, I'll just be brief. I know there's lots of stuff on the agenda and I really appreciate that, um, you took the time to, you know, just, um, you know, go through the user agreement with Brittany and I and, um, you know, just, just look at it through those eyes of, um, you know, the, the town.
I'm, I'm sorry, Diana, can you hear me?
I think she got muted.
Yeah, she got muted. So, um, just to let everyone know, we, we are gonna start using the colors. So you have seven minutes to make your presentations. So green means you have, your time is still available. Yellow means that you're winding down and red means you've gone over your seven minutes. So just to let you know, once you get started, you'll see, um, Consuela's screen change colors. Can we unmute Diana?
I didn't mute her.
She has to unmute herself. I'm not sure what happened. I'm, I was clicking to ask her to unmute.
Yeah, what, unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but it's a lot of static.
Hold on a second. I can't hear you, sorry.
Diana, are you joined from a phone and a computer? Is that what's going on?
Am I? That's, yeah, that's how I formerly.
No, no, I was asking if Diana knows.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hold on one second. If you are not speaking, can I ask you to please mute yourself? We're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you. Go ahead, Diana. We can hear you now.
Okay, I had, I've been using my phone because sometimes my, um, sound is not very good. So just.
Actually, it was, the sound was much better, whichever device you were on first. I think it was me that accidentally muted your phone, maybe when you were talking before. Now the sound is, is difficult to hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna try calling in again. I don't, sorry, um, let me, do you wanna go to the next item? Or hang on while I log in.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that and then we'll come back to you. So we're gonna go to item number two, which is the fencing at the playground. I believe that is Mr. Pinkney. Or is that you, Consuela?
No, that's Mr. Pinkney.
Okay. Mr. Pinkney, are you, are you ready?
Yes, I'm here. Um, with the fencing, uh, uh, Commissioner Yuri said that she sent everyone the, um, pictures of the fencing that she was referring to at the last meeting. Did everyone receive that?
No, I did not receive it.
Can you guys just put it up on the screen, please?
I didn't receive anything from her.
I did not either.
I was, I sent it in, uh, the group text right after, right following the meeting and Consuela. I forwarded you originally when I sent it to Greg, I believe. Or Greg has the copy of the email.
Okay, Greg, if you can share it, because I can't share anything from the phone and it would take me a while to go through the computer to find the email.
Um, I can't share it on my phone.
Can you email it to me?
I'm forwarding it to you right now. Okay, I'll send it to you.
Okay, you can go ahead with your discussion while I try to pull that up.
While she, while she's getting that, um, I did speak with the, uh, park and planning, um, in regards to the fencing and the MOU. They put me in contact with the person who does the designing for their parks and she is working to try to push the MOU through, because until we have an MOU with them, she can't do anything, uh, for us, as far as helping us with any designs or anything. Um, however, the documents that, uh, Commissioner Yuri did send me, I mentioned those to her. Um, as far as we know, there's no parks that have those type of fencing. However, uh, she said that they look like the type of fencing that, uh, is used for that type of park, like a totlot park or daycare type park. Um, we're just not sure where they actually purchased those type of, uh, curved fencing and like that was something that was, uh, crafted by some, some vendor who actually cut out those planks and everything. Um, and then the other picture was a picture of the fence that had multiple colors. Uh, but the commission didn't get a chance to see that. I'm hoping that Ms. Barber can put it up so that you can see those. Um, but right now, we are waiting for the county. Of course, we wanna get this MOU with them to help maintain that park and then also be able to utilize their, uh, design team to help us with the friendly design that will help us with the totlot as well as, uh, being talks with them about any other park issues that we have as far as our Cottage City neighborhood park down on, uh, Bunker Hill Road. So the one that she has up now, one that's kind of like cut out and, and, and cut, crafted. Um, that's one. And then the other one, Ms. Barber, put that one up. Which has a few colors to it. I believe it's the fourth one.
Yeah, it just takes me a while to share my screen, sorry.
Could I just clarify something? I thought we were talking about the park on Parkwood.
That's the totlot.
Right, you said Bunker Hill. Are we talking about a different one or?
No, I mentioned being able with the MOU and having some, uh, talks with them, they'll put us in conversation with people from the design team that if we wanted to do anything at Bunker Hill, we'll have, you're already being talked with them. So this one is the, the one that has the colors up, the different color planks. This was the second one that she sent out. Um, and then also we had mentioned that me and Ms. Barber had talked and said that, you know, until we get the grant, uh, we really shouldn't move forward on doing anything with the fencing. Um, because the grant money will be able to take care of the park. And if there's money left over, it'll be able to go towards the fencing. Um, or if we don't have enough money for the fencing and the park, then Cottage City will either be getting another grant from somewhere else or coming out the pocket to pay for the additional costs. But again, that was just our conversation. That's not something finalized that the commission wants, wishes to do. And that is pretty much it. I don't know if, um, Commissioner Yuri, uh, Armashay have anything to add far as anything that she has found.
Um, no, my, my only thought is, is the same, I think, as I already said, which is that if, if we do something before we receive a grant or whatever we are going to do to overhaul the playground, um, I feel like it makes sense to have something that's on the more neutral side, so that it'll go with whatever we have. Um, so, but it also seems like it's not necessarily an urgent, urgent need and perhaps it should just wait.
Okay, thank you. Um. I think, I'm in agreement. That we wait. But I do, out of the two choices that you just presented, I do like the little wooden cut out ones. I thought those were cute.
Same. I like those as well.
Mm-hmm. Is there any further discussion in regards to the, the playground? Hearing no further discussions, we will go back to Ms. Gillespie, who is now able to join us. Diana, are you ready? Go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So, sorry about that. Um, yeah, just wanted to thank you guys for, um, taking the time to walk us, wa, you know, walk through the user agreement with us. So just to clarify, um, there's two documents that were given to the garden. One is waiver and release, which basically is a document that every gardener, you know, would sign and, and, you know, where they would sign off and state that they understand they're participating, you know, in the garden voluntarily and that they take full responsibility for, you know, anything that may happen to them, um, while they're at the garden. Um, and that is something that, you know, everyone agrees that we should all, um, have every gardener sign off on. So that, that was not the issue. But there was another document that, um, is called the user agreement and this was an agreement specifically between the town and two, um, garden co-leaders. And this was the document that, you know, just raised a lot of, uh, red flags for us and, and this was a document that was more part of the discussion we had with, um, uh, the Chair Wheatley, um, last week. And essentially, a lot of the language in that document, you know, still continues to refer to the garden as a separate entity and uses language around like lease, leasing and, and, um, I, I'm, I'm assuming that possibly the lawyer took a lot of this, um, language from maybe other community gardens that do operate as a separate entity from the town. But in our situation, we're not a separate entity. We, you know, we grew actually out of, um, you know, efforts by former commissioners, uh, efforts by the town itself. And so, again, I, I, I know many people may, except for, you know, Commissioner Givens might not, uh, remember that context of how the garden was started and, uh, maybe with a lot of the new staff and, you know, new commissioners, it seems as if we've always operated separately, but, um, we've just been around for a long time. But this community garden was an effort that grew out of, um, commissioners, you know, activities and funding and applying for grants. And we always saw ourselves as part of the town and not a separate entity. And the language around, you know, leasing and indemnifying and coding and zoning and things like that just made it seem like, um, you know, we would become separate. And that's not the intention of the garden at all. And after looking at, um, you know, as again, as Chair Wheatley stated, all of the language and text that was, that was in that user agreement, um, it, they're part of rules that we already have as part of, you know, the agreement, the application that gardeners sign. So it just, uh, didn't, you know, we're glad that we came to this, um, compromise where we would still, we would include the waiver and release as part of the application, which was always, um, gonna be, uh, um, something that we did. And then, you know, instead of using what's like an user agreement for a separate entity, uh, that we just incorporate some of the language into, again, our application and it's something that all of the gardeners are aware of when they apply. So maybe I'll just stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Diane. So, um, we'll open it up for discussion. Ward one, any discussion?
Um, I'm in favor of, of, uh, doing what the garden is asking here. It seems reasonable to me. Pardon me. There are only two minor things that I might add, and that is, um, on the rules, just to make sure that the gardeners are aware of it, I might add, um, that, uh, they're, they cannot bring animal traps and, um, that they can use the commu, the garden tools, but when they're finished, um, and when there are no more gardeners there, they, the tools need to be put back in the shed and the shed needs to be locked. Just because if, if that's not put there, I'm not sure, the gardeners might know about it through discussions, but, um, it might be good to just add that to the rules. And then the only other thing is, um, in the waiver, it refers to board members and I wondered if that was intended to be commission members. I know it says elected or appointed officials, but, um, board members, I'm not sure what that refers to. So you might wanna change that to commission members. But apart from those two things, I think, um, what Diana's saying makes sense and, um, I would agree.
Thank you. Ward two, any discussion?
Um, same. I, I would agree with what the gardeners are asking and I certainly appreciate them being here and I don't want it to be burdensome and, um, yeah, so I'm in support of what they're requesting.
Thank you. Ward three, I am in agreement. Ward four, Commissioner Givens, any discussion?
I don't, I don't have any discussion at this time.
Thank you. At large, Commissioner. Any discussion?
Um, no discussion from me, thank you.
Thank you. So, sounds like we are all in agreement. And so at next week's meeting, we'll officially make the change to the ordinance.
Could I just ask, do, do people agree with the minor suggestions that I made?
Diana, do you agree with Commissioner Young's suggestions?
Yeah, I do. Um, and I know that we have something in our rules that already states that, like, people cannot, gardeners cannot use chemicals, for example. So I think it will be easy to add animal traps there. And then, um, I'll just make sure that we include the, the other item about locking the tools up in the shed as well. Um, yeah.
Diana, can you also?
Board members, you said that, that should be changed to commissioners? Or commission, or commission members? Probably the commission, probably. Yeah, commission, seems like. Okay, well, yeah, that's fine with me. Um, yep.
Okay, and, and Anna, could you just take this, um, back to the other gardeners? Like, I know Brittany was concerned. So if you could just pass it on that we're in agreement with the compromise.
Okay, yeah, I will share it with her. Um, sure.
Thank you. Thanks. So we can go on to the next item, which would be a winter employee appreciation event. Ms. Barber, do you wanna take that one?
Yes, ma'am. Um, can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so typically, um, pre-COVID, um, the town sponsored a winter employee appreciation event, um, which consisted of, uh, the town employees and commissioners, um, gathering together at some event, whether it was dinner or lunch or something like that. And it also, um, included in the budget, um, a gift from the commission to the employees. Last year, that was a gift card. And, um, the employees, a Visa gift card and the employees enjoyed that. With COVID, unfortunately, we don't think that it would be wise for us to try to gather in a large group. Um, I don't know that any restaurant at this point with the surge would be able to accommodate that. So, um, my suggestion, um, is, and I, I floated it, um, with the office manager and I did send out an. and I did send out an email to other employees. Nobody got back to me. So, um, if you all approve what I am suggesting, I will um, get with them again to make sure that um, they are uh, agreement of what uh, I'm, I'm going to suggest. And my suggestion is, is that um, with the eighteen hundred dollars that you all appropriated for this year for the winter appreciation event, that we give each employee a gift card in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. And then use the um, remaining three hundred dollars to um, buy lunch for um, the um, employees. It would be a prepackaged lunch, whether it's from Panera or um, across the street at Charbro Chicken or some restaurant where they can um, prepackage the meal. And it can be like a grab and go for the employees. They would eat, you know, wherever they wanted to eat, whether it's their desk or take it home. Whatever they would like to do. So, um, that's my suggestion. Um, and you all can give me your input on that and I would take that back to the employees. I'm sure they would be appreciative of anything that you all give um, to us. That's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Any discussion, Ward one?
Um, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that's good. Just if I could go back to the previous thing. We might want to um, for next week, ask um, Kevin to draft an amendment to um, if, if it's not too early to do that, um, to the garden ordinance, taking out the part referring to the user agreement. But on the employees, I, I agree. Um, we appreciate our employees and I support what um, Ms. Barbara is suggesting.
Thank you. Ward two, any discussion?
Um, no, I'm absolutely in favor of uh, supporting the employees. Giving a little, something extra in exchange, um, well, not in exchange, in place of the fact that can't be meeting in person or doing something like that. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm in agreement as well. Ward four, Commissioner?
I have no problem.
Thank you. Thank you. At large, Commissioner?
I'm, I'm in agreement as well.
Thank you. Ms. Barbara, we have a consensus. We're all in agreement. So I think you can move forward with that.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next on our agenda, number four is the community center. Chief, I believe that's you. You have the floor. Chief, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
There you go. Sorry about that. Yeah, I don't know if everybody received the email sent out Saturday um, night in reference to um, some kind of idea thrown out that we can all send to the commission when they arrive on Thursday. Um, the same idea of what we want to have um, to move forward on uh, trying to get a center over there at the park location. Um, because I think it'd be a good idea for us to allow them to actually use some of the funds they have um, to actually build a center for the community instead of um, burden our taxpayers with that responsibility of upkeep security as well as um, um, putting personnel in that, that facility. Uh, so, I did put a proposal out. The structure is something to give an idea of open space kind of structure. Um, I, I think the idea was try to have um, some kind of um, art theme. Um, due to the fact that we are in the art district of Prince George's County, which we want to um, stimulate people's um, vision of crafting arts as well as music. Uh, the open space would be used for pretty much um, um, like an amphitheater or something that people can actually have jazz concerts or other concerts there. So it's, it's pretty much on that kind of mindset. Also, the opening space will give people vision to actually be creative. And I think um, with the wood look and the look of nature, uh, will actually bring out the best in people in reference to their vision of the arts. That's just my opinion, uh, proposal that I'm going to move forward on showing um, the staff that comes in to look at our park and recreations on Thursday.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Um, yes, we did receive your email. Did you want to bring up the picture for our, for the public to see what you're talking about?
I can. Um, I'm not sure how it will look, but I will try my best to share my screen.
If you see the fluorescent lights, uh, it gives that little festive look, especially at nighttime when we want to have a jazz concert or some kind of um, meet and greet. Uh, I think it'd be um, great to have something like that, especially on the um, the area along the trail, because we're going to have a bike rental there where we can actually profit um, from this with a partnership with Park and Recorations, that um, we would actually rent out bikes so people can actually ride the trail. Um, also, if you see the wooden planks and stuff, I think that'd be a good look to actually have that nature look that um, instead of having concrete walkways to the different buildings, we would have something like um, the wood look to actually um, make it seem look natural and really fit in with the facade of the, of Riverbank. As you see the um, different parts, uh, showing the different ways you can walk underneath to have shade as well as buildings above buildings, that shows that we have separate um, areas where people can actually have their uh, classes. Like we want to have a photography class, we want to have an art class, um, a studio for uh, people to learn how to mix music. Um, to have something like a, a studio or something like that within the building. Um, but that's the kind of structure we're trying to look at, which is, it'll be um, a little bit more cheaper than a um, a large building. At the same time, can be very versatile. And you see in the middle, you have your open space uh, inside your um, in the area. Um, I'm trying to look at the, the right side to be a little bit wider, to have more like a um, bigger space. But just to give you an idea of something that can be given out to show on how we want to have this building to actually fit in with our facade of our, our forest and our river.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any discussion from the Commissioners, Ward one?
Um, I guess my thoughts are, if the parks people want to spend the money on something like that, you know, that, that would be great, assuming that there's still be enough open space in the soccer field, so people could play soccer or other games. I guess I don't see the town putting money into that since we've already talked about assuming it comes through having a community center um, right behind the town hall, um, if we get that property. Um, but as I understand it, you're saying that the parks, parks and planning would pay for all this?
Yes, ma'am. And um, we will actually partner with probably Bond Bill or something like that to help them on the backend. But it's pretty much would be their funding to actually put that in there. Uh, because it's park location and there are space, they will be responsible for the upkeep, uh, the actual um, hiring of individuals, which would be a, a plus for us because um, to have something like that, we have some of your people that have the arts here in the community. A lot of our own residents be employed there. And I think it'd be a positive thing for the community. Um, another thing too is that we're not going to put this um, recreation spot on the open field. This would be the location where we have, where the basketball court is, in the other areas, um, in that tree line. Uh, which where it would actually build a little um, space right there instead of that open field. The open field is going to be left alone. So, uh, prior to
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So you're talking about where we have Tidied City Day?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
But we'd still have some basketball courts where
Yes, the basketball courts would actually be put in there, uh, but it's going to be probably in a, in a different area. Uh, they have other areas where we're trying to possibly move some trees. The trees will actually be planted around the center because we have open space where uh, in between the buildings, we'll have more trees there, um, replanted um, as well as some colorful plants. So it's going to be really beautiful to actually bring out that area, uh, with still keeping that wood line.
Well, that sounds like a, a wonderful idea. Again, if the, if, if the parks and planning is willing to pay for it. Um, I still would want to have um, a, a, a light and either bleachers or a pavilion or something where people could sit um, in the field area.
Yeah, we, we, that's that. That's still on the discussion. We, we didn't take that off the page. It's the point where, um, right now, I did talk to the director over at Park and Plantings. Um, he rolled with me, uh, with the state's attorney's ride for domestic violence. And he's possibly coming out. Uh, I threw that idea to him a couple of months ago in reference, well, last, my October. In reference to possibly um, looking at us for us getting a center here. He likes the idea because he said he would like to have so- something close to the um, trail because there's nothing for people to actually have a rest stop on our trail here on Anacostia Trail. And to have something that Park and Planting uh, use for a rest stop for bike riders and joggers, it would actually bring more um, visibility to our area, to make it more safer. At the same time, we could actually use that trail a lot better because you have the um, rental of bikes. So I think it would win-win for us to actually build revenue by the bikes a rental too.
Yeah, you mean have a place where people could take the bikes?
Yes, bikes. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that'd be great. Okay. Well, thanks. Okay. That's all I have.
Ward two, comments?
Um, yes. So I just saw the email, right, as our meeting was starting and I'm very excited about this. Uh, Chief and I uh, talked about this idea a few, I don't know, a little while ago. And um, I'm really excited at what you've put together. I think it's a great start. I love the idea of using the uh, shipping containers and incorporating green building. I think it's beautiful. Um, I will also note that when the Chief and I were talking about it, one of the things that um, as we were brainstorming, was mentioned was possibly the idea of a trail that goes through from where the basketball court is now, where the new uh, community arts center would be. And it could go through and maybe basketball courts, tennis court, or whatever, something could be over on that other side. And yes, highlighting that field um, more as well for use. Um, I also just, you know, as we were talking, the idea came to me if we were going to do this and do a community arts center down there, um, that perhaps, and I don't know how the other commissioners feel and this, whether this is something that the town would want to take on. But I was thinking that we could potentially instead use that parcel of land next to town hall for a small community pool. That could also be part of, um, you know, the, the county system, county pool system. Um, I know that's a whole other ball of wax, but you know, I don't know that we need two community centers. And I like the idea of integrating it with the trail down there and everything the Chief is suggesting. So, um, yeah, so I'm excited and I would love to um, partner with you in the development of this further. And uh, hope to be able to make it to the meeting that's coming up. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna, for Ward three, I'm gonna um, say that I'm in agreement with the presentation that the Chief has made. I do like the idea, especially allowing Park and Planning to um, basically cover the expense of the, the art center. My one concern would be, as someone who lives in the townhouses, that's right next door to the location that you're speaking of, Chief. And you said, you mentioned a jazz concert. So, in the past, when the um, Crossroads was up and running, the townhouses had a lot of, we got a lot of noise from that club. So I'm not saying there's going to be a club over there, but what's the noise level going to be like? Because we're right next door to that parcel of land.
Well, it's going to be regulated by um, the, on the commission here as well as Park and Planning. And they have certain hours. It's not going to be something like late at night. It'd be like a, a evening where um, it's not going to be all the time. It could be just like, you know, um, uh, once in a blue moon. But it's the point where we have a spot where we actually have something. If you want to have an event, we can do something like that. Um, it'd be very tasteful. It'd be to a point where it'd be at um, uh, probably between noon and probably six or, uh, no, late into eight. So it'll be a point where it'd be shut down very quickly and um, just, you know, get people to come and gather a little bit because we have a lot of entertainers in the area. That I think we um, looking forward to having a space they can call their own to actually do something like that. Uh, that's tasteful, uh, not too loud, but at the same time, um, uh, being a manageable hour of the day. And that's something that, you know, we can throw out and um, and see how we can manage that a little bit better. But it, it's going to be something that we, you will actually have your uh, say, uh, as a community, as well as the townhome community over there, as well as the um, the commission. Y'all will have a say on how y'all want to manage that.
Okay, and then another question I have, um, and I, I don't remember where I heard this. It might have been in one of the meetings with Park and Planning. But I thought they said that they were, they weren't going to be doing the smaller centers anymore.
Exactly. Well, well, when I talked to the director the other day, because I'm trying to get him to come out and he's looking forward to coming out. Uh, he's in charge of all Park and Planning. Uh, he's a new gentleman, um, um, Mr. Taylor. Uh, he just came on board like two years ago. And he's looking, he's very excited about having something on Anacostia Trail. He said, right now, they don't have any um, buildings on that trail that actually people can actually stop and actually use a property other than on the other side of the river, which Blainsburg has, uh, which is um, pretty much geared to like water in the um, pretty much the war of eighteen twelve. I honestly feel a little bit different, special, unique, that they do have funding for smaller things that is different. That's why I thought the idea of having the arts, because it's something that they don't have any other facility in all Park and Planning in Prince George's County that's geared to the arts like this one would be. So actually would show something uniqueness, at the same time, something that's needed on that trail. So he really is looking forward to coming out on Thursday, he, if he can uh, clear his calendar. So if we get him there, this is a good way we can pitch our idea and really get his back.
Okay, well, well, you have my support in that. But I, I know on the other side, on Koma Manor's side, I see you artists. Give me, give me one second. On Koma Manor's side, um, I know before, before the pandemic and everything happened, they used to have free concerts on Sundays. And the attendance was good, depending on who the artist was. But then I noticed over the years, they started cutting back. Park and Planning started cutting back. They used to do it every Sunday. Then they started cutting it back to maybe like every other Sunday. And then all of a sudden, it, it was only certain months where they actually had someone out there. So, do you think that they're going to, I mean, being that everyone's, you know, money is short everywhere, especially with the pandemic, do you think they really would be willing to fund this?
Uh, yes. Um, the reason why is because um, we are actually showcasing the actual area um, in a way that had never been shown before in reference to all arts, not just music. We're talking about photography. We're talking big geography. Matter of fact, we have a gentleman that's moved in um, that he's a big art for. And when I told him about the idea, he said, I would be happy to go there and work there to show kids, young people how to, to um, develop film. Um, you have some ideas in reference to uh, the arts and reference to um, painting, sculpting. Um, uh, we, we talked about having a darkroom to teach people how to actually develop film like the old way instead of just digital. So there's a lot of things that the center would do. Uh, the rooms are very versatile that you actually form different kind of classes when you need them. So it's not like it'd be one set thing except for your, your um, your radio studio, which is going to have to stay the same. Other than that, everything else can be moved around to, to facilitate the class. So I think it's be a good thing and something unique and special for this area. And actually will um, put us on the map in reference to, we have something that nobody else has in the whole county.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Ward four, any comments?
Yeah, I think it's um, I think it's a nice idea. Um, let's see how, what they, the timeline would be. Um, I, I don't anticipate it. If it, if it did go through, going up within eight years, um, because of um, the whole budget process with the state and some of the funding and all that. But nevertheless, uh, I think that it could be something good in the future. And I, I wouldn't want to interfere um, with our plans for um, all, all the personal plans for a community center here. Um, a, 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 a community pool for, for everyone outside of town wouldn't, we wouldn't have the big enough block for, for all. for everyone outside of town wouldn't, we wouldn't have the big enough block for for all of that. For, but so and then not even know if that thing's gonna go through or not or whatever. These are what first continue to stay on track. We had one um, let's say, our own community center. Um because that project may or may not come through. Um it's just an idea at this point. Um we're right there on the cusp of one, of making ours more so onto reality.
Thank you. Ed, commissioner, any comments?
Commissioner, can you kind of review what Commissioner gave me so that I couldn't hear him very well?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Yuri. I honestly couldn't hear him very well either. I know he he felt that it was um something worth looking into. Um he mentioned something about the budget and maybe eight years from now. I wasn't quite sure. I didn't catch all of that. It was a lot of feedback.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize for that. I think I I had my external speaker on. Um can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, so I was just saying that I think it's a great idea. I think that uh that type of timeline wouldn't wouldn't probably getting constructed for at least probably eight years or so, which is which is fine, you know, if that could happen. Think those are good ideas. Um I think it's a different type of use than what we would desire in regards to our our um our own um community center here. I don't believe that the property here would be big enough, a big enough footprint in order to be able to establish a a a pool for outside uh venues, for outside personnel and so and so on and so forth. So um I'm not sure if that would be a appropriate use for that. And I also said that by 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 the building next to us um being more of a um a solid plan and this is still more of the idea phases and, you know, and our 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 project, once we attain the property, could be constructed within a three-year time period and and completed, where this project wouldn't even be begin to get constructed for a minimum of eight years um due to the whole process that it takes, through the budget process, through the state and uh and uh county and all that. So that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Yuri?
Um, yes. So the first thing I have to say is I think that it's a wonderful idea and the blueprint looks really good. I did not receive your email. I just reviewed it for some reason. I don't know if it went into my junk box, but if you could resend it to me. If you could resend it to me, that would um, I would appreciate that. Um I am completely for it. The only thing that I have is that I know that there were a few uses that we were considering for our community center. Um, you know, maybe a little bit of a hall that could be rented out for certain uses. Uh maybe certain recreational uses, and I hope that this concept fits into that as well. So maybe we can look at how that would, you know, the use of the art center could be used into some of the reasons that we were gonna construct the the Cottage City Community Center with our funds. Um but if those two things align, I mean, I think it would be a wonderful idea.
Yes, ma'am. But like I said, that other diagram, um I was talking about the backside. The third building would be a little bit longer because it's gonna be a mixed-use um space where you have dividers in it. So you actually divide it into like four rooms. At the same time, you can open it up to have large gatherings. So that's um what we're trying to pitch to them. That we can have a versatile um space where we can use for multiple things, like you said. Uh we wanna have a space that we guys should rent out, use as a hall, use as a large gathering space. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Hearing that, there's no further discussion in regards to the community center. We'll go to the next item, which I believe, Chief, that is you as well, the Trek Grant. The grant for the um scooters. You're on mute, Chief.
All right, um let me pull it up real quick. Okay, um myself and Ms. Barbara had a meeting with um uh IMSAC um in reference to the grant. Uh they advised us that um the vehicle that we want to purchase, the two vehicles we wanna purchase are under their mileage per charge. Okay, so to get the full grant effect, you have to have a vehicle that has um that could provide uh one charge, two hundred miles per charge. But due to the fact that our cycles don't do but thirty-seven, they gave us the option of giving us money for um three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars per vehicle with that mileage per charge. So what I decided to do is go back to the vendor, take some things off of the um the proposal to actually bring the money down a little bit, the price for the unit. So we have um two proposals to have y'all vote on or see if we wanna move forward with the grant or not. Uh the first proposal is to get um two bikes um uh at the cost of eighteen thousand three hundred and five dollars. Um the grant will actually give us seven thousand five hundred and the CIC would have to pay ten thousand eight oh five. The second is going to go down to one a trike uh with uh nine thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. The grant will actually pay three thousand seven hundred fifty when awarded and um the CIC had to come out of the pocket for five thousand six hundred and five dollars. So those are the two options that are up right now. Or the third option is for us to remove ourselves from the grant process.
Can we see a picture of the this this vehicle?
Yes. Let me check five real quick. Let me, let me share the screen. I can um.
I apologize. I'm just trying to find the email that the chief sent me that has the uh picture. I have the prices, but I don't have the pictures. Bear with me. If you all can have a any more discussion, I'll find the picture.
Well, if you go to um the website, you probably pull it up real quick. Um let me Google trike. Professional.
While she's doing that, we'll go ahead and have a discussion. Ward one, any questions for the chief tonight?
Um, well, I guess my thoughts. I I go back to several years ago when there were, we had some officers. Um, I don't know, ten years ago, maybe not that long. But for a while, we had some officers who would walk around town and ride regular bicycles. Um, and um, well, I would support this if the grant covered the whole thing. Um, I guess I am a little hesitant. Um, if we have to put that much money, okay, it's it's one of those scooter type things, I see. Um, I guess I'm not really clear why um these are better than just walking around or riding regular bicycles. Um, the the, when when officers would walk around and ride their bicycles, they were much more approachable and, you know, they would talk to people. People would, you'd be out in your yard and you'd talk to them when they came by. And um that was really nice. Um, and I guess I don't see this type of machine as furthering that kind of interaction. You know, the officer would have to stop and make a decision to go to somebody. Um, so I guess I'm I'm more hesitant than I would be if um were to cover the whole thing. Um, and I guess I'm I'm I guess I'm sort of urging the idea to think about just having officers walk around. You know, not on an on an official guided tour, but just uh informally and informally riding their bicycles. Or we could pay for, you know, regular bicycles that they could ride. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward two.
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't know. It seems like a lot of money for another, I don't know. I mean, if I'd be curious, Chief, if you have, if there's reasons that you have that you feel like we need, our officers need these. Um, but it just, it feels a little, feels a little excessive to me. I don't know.
Thank you. Um I'm gonna, I'm kinda in agreement with Commissioner Armichay. We have a lot of vehicles and um I know this would be, this would be a charged vehicle, right, Chief?
Yes, it'd be a charged um regular outlet in um the building. Um, why we wanna go to is because um to actually go to actually patrol to uh the whole tour off of it, which we actually would save gas money because instead of driving around in a car all the time, we have an option where we can actually stay on electric vehicle the whole time, which would actually um reduce our um our fuel um footprint in the community as well as show that we're going green. Another thing too is instead of a bicycle, bicycles are still be used. There's a point where we actually have an option, a full shift that uh we can actually go to calls with it. On a bicycle, we have to get back to our car to get into the vehicle to get to a call a lot quicker in case of backing an officer up, wanting domestic calls. We had a problem on this past summer when we had officer on the bike. Um, he had a while to get to back up the other officer because he had to drive, uh ride the bike from one side of the town to the other to back the officer up. But having this, we can actually go pretty much um um a little bit quicker to get to the officer to actually spawn and we actually patrol full time, for eight hours or ten hours, we can patrol on this bike. This bike of one charge can go thirty-seven miles, which pretty much can actually have the officer on this, the full uh ten-hour shift. As at the same time, we have an access with the community, be able to get off the bike and talk to people to actually really have something that pulls people toward them because it's something different to actually engage the community. Um, and I think it's something that's positive and something that was actually solves, save us a lot of money with our fuel expenses as well as rent on our vehicles. But it's just a suggestion. Um, like I said, we have two options, um like I told you before. Because I thought we can get a a larger amount from this grant, that's why we applied for it. But because the vehicle does not uh meet that criteria of two hundred uh miles per um charge, uh they gave us an offer that they they pretty much told us that they liked this idea. They really, um IMSAC said they really loved this idea. They wish more police departments went with this. But it's the point where this kind of, at this time, uh put, give more money to us, which we wanted. But um I'm willing to go here and go down to one one bike right now. Uh try to find funding for um other measures to actually get two bikes that don't down the road. But then one bike will benefit from us. This is off-road, on-road um bike. It can go inside a building. So if you wanna go inside um uh the restaurants, if that, this could actually drive inside there. Um, if we want to uh go off-road, if we have our trails and stuff, this will actually go on our trails. Uh pop curbs. The problem we have with the T-three is that the T-three cannot make uphill. So we we tend to be pushing the T-three up hills a lot. That's what we have right now. We did look and try.
That's right, I remember.
We did look into trying to sell the T-three to actually um compensate the money that we spent in this. But a lot of people gave us offers like two thousand and um I say it was a worthless, giving up that T-three for two thousand dollars. Um, because you're not gonna be able to get it back if you sell it for two thousand because it's like a twelve thousand dollar um piece of equipment that I don't wanna give away for two thousand dollars. So um, because still, we have uses when we have a large um giveaways and stuff going down and um getting people to stay in line and stuff like that. But in reference to going up hills, uh the T-three is not doing it for us.
And forgive me, Chief. I remember now that you're saying this. I do remember you saying some of that before about it being able to go faster and you can even go on a road, so. I I could go along with it. And I do, I definitely appreciate reducing the carbon footprint. Um so, okay, thank you for that re-explanation.
Okay, thank you. Uh we're at yellow, so I guess we're going, we're getting a little bit long into this conversation. Um, I I do wanna ask you, Chief. I know you mentioned reducing our carbon footprint. So are you saying that you're gonna get rid of one of the vehicles if we get?
What we told, what we told IMSAC was that this vehicle will actually um take one of our vehicles off the map in reference to um use um in reference to reduce our actually um money that we put toward our fuel costs. Uh and that's what I wanna really do is try to show that we can reduce our fuel costs um across the board with having um electrical vehicles. We have one with code enforcement now having this, that during the warm months, we can actually have the officers patrol the whole shift in this. Um, one good thing about this trike that you can't do with a bike is that this can fold up very quickly and go into a cruiser. For instance, if we do have to do an arrest, we can call for someone to actually come and transport our prisoner. We can actually ride this back to our cruiser, fold it up, put in the cruiser very quickly, instead of putting a bike rack, and actually get down and do our um paperwork for the rest. At the same time, if we have to do something um other than that, we can actually fold this up and actually transport it um better than a T-three or a bicycle. So it's a little bit more versatile than um a bicycle, a lot quicker than a bicycle and a more um less expensive in repairs than a T-three.
Thank you, Chief. Uh Ms. Barbara, can you go back to green on your screen? Because um I know we going over to seven minutes, but we still have two other commissioners who may have some comments. Thank you. Um, ward four, any comments?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes. So I'm always an advocate for trying new things for um, you know, within our departments and so on. Um, one thing that I've been troubled by in the past, because and and no offense, this has nothing to do with you, Chief Ayers, absolutely nothing having to do with you because it's not personal. This is just what I've experienced. I've been on doing this thing a long time. And we we get sold on, we were sold on the Dodge Chargers because they're they're um, they only use um the the operate under eight cylinders, but they only use four cylinders with the gas and and then those have become somewhat of a nightmare. You know, with the blown engine. And then it was the bicycles and always an advocate for that. And we bought bought these bicycles. And I'm not even sure if we still have them all, you know, or what's going on with that. And 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 then the T-threes. And and we we got the T-three and I was all excited about that. Here's the problem. Here's the, here's really the problem. The officers don't do it. And that's what irks me to like to no end. It's like, you know what? You have, you should not have to send out directives to say, okay, today I want you on the T-three. There should be some type of thing set up that, you know what, I'm not asking anybody to go out there and walk a foot beat in the snow or ride a bicycle and it's thirty degrees outside. But there has to be some type of mechanism in place that we we, these things are just kinda done, triggered automatically so that we can get this. We we've had people tell us that um literally, I've had lieutenant, a lieutenant tell us that it, walking in the neighborhood is not effi- eh eh efficient because if we get a call for service, then we can't respond in a timely fashion. Those are excuses. Or we had uh someone, uh another uh previous uh chief tell us that um, oh, we're gonna start community policing in May. These things uh should not be, uh they should not be events. You know, the these things should be mindsets in that um eh like a normal activity. You know, just like, you know, everybody comes in and they don't forget to clock in. They they absolutely don't forget to clock in because they know that's a tie to whether they get paid or not. So why should we have to? And we should not, so I should say, we should not have to kinda force them. You know, um we should figure out a way to ensure that they're a part of, acclimated to a part of the the culture that we want them out there visible. There is no one on this commission at current time that that I'm aware of that has a different vision than the visibility of our police department. There and 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 we wanna ensure that that continues to happen. Again, I'm I'm not saying no. I I would say, though, I would not go for two. If we did, I would, I would advocate for one to see how it how it plays out. But If we did, I would, I would advocate for one to see how it, how it plays out. But you know, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, it's disheartening because to me, it's not rocket science. This is not rocket science. This whole visibility thing, this community policing thing is not rocket science. But people have made it more complex than it really needs to be. I'm glad to see you're here, Chief. But this is not, again, this is not about you because you're not gonna be here forever. And we, we have to structure a department and a government in which one person doesn't um, doesn't affect the outcome of the total government, doesn't stop it from functioning as a well-oiled machine. You know what I'm saying?
Right. Well, and I agree with you, sir. And like I said, that's why we brought Sergeant Hayes on board because she had the same vision I have in reference to community policing. Uh, she is bike certified, I'm bike certified. We, we were planning, we actually had two of the officers uh, sign up for bike school, but they got canceled due to the fact of the crisis. Our T-three is going out almost twice a week right now. Um, since I got here, the T-three has been out twice, uh, every, almost twice a week. Uh, definitely on Fridays, when you give out food, the T-three is out there. Uh, we are on foot, um, we out there giving out food. Uh, we are doing more than um, I thought we would be at, at this time. I guess it helps out because of crisis because we had to do a lot of food giveaways. But we are out there on foot, we out there on with the T-three. Um, that's how we know the T-three is not uh, feasible on some, some of these streets because uh, we had to push up the streets, you know, because it won't go up there because it's, the wheel spins. Um, so we, that's why I know we have a problem with the T-three. Um, we still have efforts with T-three because we have some um, short streets that we can go on to actually do in reference to traffic control. But we are using um, the equipment we have here and we are gonna get all the officers certified to actually ride bikes. So we're not gonna put the bikes up and nothing like that. It's the point where we wanna have a vehicle that I definitely can rely on and use for a whole shift to actually, actually show reduction in the co- um, carbon footprint on the um, gas or fuel footprint in this town. Um, that we actually show um, the state of Maryland that we are reducing our carbon um, output. At the same time, community policing and visibility.
Thank, thank you. I just want, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. I wanted to put that statement out there because some people have been here, some people have not. And I've lived it and it, it really gets old and you know, you, it kinda wears on you with these uh, with these things that go on and, 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 and we've, we've gotta do a better, we can do a better job. And, and I have no problem with you. I, I'm just afraid that our future, we need to ensure that we have something in writing so that we can continue this mantra regardless of who's the chief. You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
You know, it doesn't like, you know, cuts off because, you know, A- Ayers became the sheriff of Prince George County. Now we're looking for another, you know what I'm saying? And you, you know, we have to be able to continue because we're gonna be here. The town's gonna be here whether the commissioners are here or not. You know, or, or the chief's here or not. The town's gonna be here and, and we need community policing and, uh, you know, in, in the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at large, Commissioner, any comments?
Oh, she, she's um, she said she had a family emergency, so she signed off. So the-
Oh, okay.
So she signed off uh, out of the meeting at seven, probably seven forty.
Seven thirty-two.
Seven what?
Thirty-two.
Seven thirty, okay.
Okay. Please make note that Commissioner Yuri has left the meeting at seven thirty-two. We still have a quorum because we have four commissioners present. Okay. So there's no further discussion on the track. Um, I don't know, Chief, it doesn't seem like we're all in agreement right now, does it?
Well, can I make a recommendation to make it more easy for the um, to make a decision tonight? Um, that we go ahead and move forward with the grant process. Not saying if we're gonna get it or not. Um, we could all, always, once we are, are given the opportunity to um, be rewarded this, we always can say, deny it. Um, but because we're in the process, uh, I just wanna know if we go ahead and move down to one bike or we're trying to move forward with this grant process because we have to give them a decision uh, this Friday if we're gonna um, keep our grant in or not. And so my suggestion is to keep the grant in, reduce it or modify to one bike without the extra battery to keep the price low. And just go ahead and, and um, at a later date, if y'all want me to go ahead and call them up and pull it, we can pull it. But it's the point where I don't wanna go and lose out on the opportunity of getting it if we um, can't make a decision on something tonight. So that's just my um, my suggestion.
Okay, well, um, I, I think we're all in agreement to take it from one to, from two to one.
Correct.
I think we all agreed to that. Um-
And that's what we tried to do. We tried to modify to this, um, because he's given us the opportunity to modify because he said that uh, we have a good chance of getting it if we modify. If not, it's gonna be denied off top because it doesn't meet the criteria.
Okay. Um, I guess, I guess, um, I guess we- Is anyone in objection to Chief moving forward with the grant? I guess that's the question. For just one, one bike. Yes, Miss Barbara, did, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I just wanted to let you know that that grant, once it's awarded, you do have a significant amount of time to fulfill the um, grant. Uh, it is the same grant that we got for um, our lease. And you have, I think you have like over a year to complete the terms of the agreement. So um, the money could come out of the next fiscal year. I think you have until October after the grant is awarded um, to fulfill the requirements of the grant.
Okay, and if, if some, we decide that we're just gonna pull out of it, we won't be penalized for that?
No.
Okay. Okay, so I, I saw Commissioner Armache nodding agreement, I believe. Okay, so that's one not. Ward one, are you in agreement with the chief moving forward with the grant? For only one. He's only gonna apply for one.
I had to get unmuted. Um, I guess if there's a majority who wanna go along, I don't mind going along as long, as long as we can back out later. But I guess my, my general approach sorta goes along with what uh, Demetrius was saying um, in terms of community policing. And so I don't see it as as important or ne- necessary, maybe it's some others do, but if, if there's a majority to go along with just putting it in for the grant and then we can back out later, then I, I wouldn't object to that.
I think um, Commissioner Armache is in agreement with just putting in for the grant for one. Um, Commissioner Givens?
Yes, I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement with putting in uh, this time for one.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and agree to for one, Chief. So you can, we have consensus to move forward. Just um, keep in mind that um, there is some concern about the community policing with this vehicle. So if we do receive it, we, we expect the officers to use it and to do the patrol and the community policing in the town, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So um, the other item before we go into a closed session was um, Public Works, Mr. Pinkney. Are you available?
Yeah, I'm here.
You have the floor, sir.
So I just wanted to give an update uh, on the F-four fifty truck. Um, spoke with the Odyssey and Shankle. They did another road test, uh, poured the truck back in. It still wasn't firing properly. Um, they poured the, removed the coil packs on the engine and found that there was some sludge in the engine and the cam uh, found that the cam, the engine cam is white. Um, and their recommendation is to replace the engine due to excessive internal wear. Uh, when I talked to him, he said that he felt like the parts that would take to rebuild or uh, fix the engine is about the same price of a new engine. So he recommended that we just replace the engine versus spending the money to rebuild the engine and get a less warranty when if you replace the engine, you'll get a three-year warranty on it.
How, how much is that gonna cost?
Uh, I have- Somebody was saying something?
Yeah, I, this is one. How much did you say that was gonna cost? I didn't hear you say that price.
I, I haven't said it yet. Uh, through Odyssey and Shankle, where the vehicle is right now, they tried to give us a deal because they have the vehicle and they've been working on it. Um, their price is eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, I talked with Steve over at Fleet just to see what they would uh, what they would do. And I also sent him the uh, information that Odyssey gave us of all the stuff that they have done. Um, and he sent me back an estimate price of ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
So Fleet was more?
Yeah, Fleet was about eighteen hundred more.
Okay. And what's your recommendation?
Um, well, I spoke with Commissioner Givens and he felt like we should have sent it, we should send it over to Fleet. Uh, but at this point with the pricing of the engines, um, I'm considering to just leave it with Odyssey and just let them fix it. Uh, it's a cheaper price, the, the engine. One engine is coming from Ford and the other engine is coming from I believe it's Jasper's. Which is another uh, engine manufacturer company. Uh, but they both have three-year warranty. And with Fleet, he did say that once they get it, they would do an overall check because there may be some other things like the water pump and stuff like that that they will probably recommend changing once they put in a new engine. So his air price could actually go up.
Okay, uh, thank you. Is that the end of your presentation, Mr. Pinkney?
Yes. Uh, oh, I did have another one. The um, we do have the other truck back. The other truck is running uh, perfectly fine. They uh, Fleet did say that they had a truck that's deadlined. Um, cause they were looking for a flatbed for us to put on that truck because of the rust. They have a truck that's deadlined. It's white. Um, but they'll give us the, the uh, body for no, no cost, just repay the labor of them uninstalling the old one and putting the new one on. Which is just a matter of just removing some bolts. He said it probably would be just a few hundred dollars. Uh, they charge us, I believe he says sixty dollars an hour. So however many hours it takes for them to actually put it on or whatever shop materials they use uh, will be what we will put on, what we would uh, pay for that. Um, I'm gonna move forward with that probably in the next couple of weeks because we need that to put the uh, salt spread on the back of the truck. But I did wanna let the commission know because it will be white at least until uh, next budget cycle where we could put in the budget to get it painted unless we have money towards the end of the budget cycle to get it painted in this year. Um, myself and Miss Barbara agreed that a white truck there for a few months is not gonna hurt us unless the commission sees otherwise. But in order to uh, get that bed on and have it for the winter months, for the uh, snow, um, we can just move forward with a white bed because we have not been able to find a bed from anywhere. Um, Fleet's been even looking for it for a long time and they just realized they had one deadline, so they were willing to give us that one.
Okay, thank you. Any discussions, Ward one?
I don't really have any comments. Um, I guess that, that we've got the money in the budget to use, right?
Uh, well, I just got these numbers, so uh, I'll get with Miss Barbara and we'll look through projects and things that we have scheduled to come out of this budget. And then next meeting, we could um, next week, we could uh, give you guys a actual line item that it can come out of.
Okay.
Ward two, any, any discussion?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have no questions or comments. Ward four, any discussion?
Yes, um, yeah. Clearly, we gotta get the, the truck fixed. So um, as opposed to purchasing a new one, that truck is sixty-plus thousand for a new one. So you know, I, I'm not ready to do all that, especially because the truck ain't that old. It hasn't been used that much. How many miles does that truck have on it, Greg?
Uh, I don't know what it currently has on it now. Because I don't have it. But uh, what, oh, hmm, twenty thousand at the most.
Right, exactly. So we, we definitely have to get it fixed. We gotta stop leaving the truck running, you know, unattended or, or even sitting in a truck and, and, and because the cam shouldn't be wiped already. Uh, you know, um, but that's, that's not where we're at. You know, we are where we are. So we gotta get, I, I believe we do have to get it fixed. I would say in regards to the, to the bed, um, yeah, I would love to get that other bed on there. Uh, I wouldn't advocate that we wait the whole summer to get it painted, find the money, get it painted. We can't run around. We're a government. People have an expectation. Our residents have an expectation of us. Can't we run around here looking like, you know, hob, hob-mogged and we, when we have the monies and um, and so um, we, we have more than enough to, to make sure that we get it painted at some, at some juncture. But I would say that you should have the, the bed liner this time sprayed um, with the um, um, the, the rust, uh, the, the, the black, uh, I can't remember the coating. So before, before, before even you get it painted, make sure that's coated before um, you start putting that salt stuff on there, uh, you know, into the bed because then it's already affecting it and stuff like that. So whether it means that you pay to get it done or whether you guys go up there and you do it yourselves, you know, get the stuff and you paint it on yourself, make sure that we get that done so that we don't rust this uh, rust this bed out. That bed should have been done when we first bought it, but that's another story. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Givens. So um, being that you made those um, comments and suggest, I do have a question. What year is this truck?
Two thousand eleven.
It's two thousand eleven. It has twenty thousand miles on it. And you said the engine is completely gone?
No, the cam is wiped. The, the engine's not blown. The cam is wiped. So what that means is the cam is worn. So in order to ta- to take out the cam, they have to dismember the heads off of the um, the uh, the engine. The, the amount of work that it takes to do all of that and their, the uncertainty of, of the longevity and stuff like that, they're probably, they're just recommending that you just go ahead and get a new engine. By the time you do all of that, the money they're gonna charge you will be close to getting a new engine. So you might as well just get a new engine, start from scratch and, and kinda have a warranty with it, you know?
Okay, so basically, it's not the engine, it's the cam, but because of all the labor and parts and whatever.
Right, right.
You can get the new engine.
Right, right. The cam sits inside of the um, it sits inside of the engine, but to get to it, you have to go through a lot. If it was my truck, I'd change the cam. But that's me changing it. I mean, I, I physically know how to do all that. But this, this is a situation where, you know, we, we have to look at the, the best case, and I mean, you know, the the best situation for our town and look at longevity and stuff like that. So I think at this point, you know, um, the eight thousand, whatever it is, it is what it is. But what about this computer that we had to buy? Are, are, are they taking that back off our bill or what's going on with that? Cause they, they made us buy a computer, do they not? Like for three thousand dollars?
Uh, thirteen hundred.
It was thirteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So we still, so-
We still needed the computer because originally they wasn't getting any uh, any uh, uh, feedback from the computer.
Mm-hmm.
So when they put the new computer on there, they had to program it to the security system and everything. And now they getting the uh, feedback and everything from the computer. So the computer was damaged.
Yeah, or a process of elimination. You, you change enough stuff on a, on an engine, you'll figure it out at some point. But anyway, that's another story. All right, thank you.
Okay, so um, Greg, your, your recommendation is to go ahead and, and get the new engine, but to stick with the company. Jasper's, I think you, which, which company are you staying to go with?
Shankle, where the vehicle is.
Go with Fleet?
Yeah, Odyssey and Shankle.
Okay. And, and is that what you're recommending to, Miss Barbara?
Yes, ma'am. I think that would be the most prudent thing to do at this point. Yes, ma'am. I think that would be the most prudent thing to do at this point.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a consensus. Are there any objections with, um, Public Works moving forward? On getting the new engine?
Uh, I, I just, I don't have any objection. I just had a quick question. Um, are, uh, is Odyssey and Shankle, are they putting a Jasper engine or are they putting a Ford engine in?
It's a Ja- theirs is the Jasper's engine.
It's actually a better engine, but nevertheless. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Fleet has, Fleet, uh, priced us for a Ford engine and Odyssey and Shankle priced us for the Jasper.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, obviously I don't know the difference, so. Guys, take care. Um, okay, so that was the last thing on the agenda. Um, do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak? I know it's, it's getting late, but the floor is open to the public now. For any comments, questions? Okay, hearing no comments from the public, I believe we can adjourn, but we do need to go into closed session, Ms. Barbara. Were you gonna bring up the document for me to read?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Lord, I can't see that. Can I make it bigger? I'm sorry, I'm on a very small computer. And the screen is not big. Okay, it's cutting off the top. I can't see it. It's still cutting it off. I can't see it.
Um, I have to make it smaller.
Okay, so hearing that there are no comments from the public, we are going, we're not going to adjourn completely because we'll come back into open session. But we are gonna go into a closed session to discuss. Do we need to take a vote to go into closed session?
So you need to read the, um, statutory authority to close the meeting? And I had that, I had that highlighted for you.
Okay, but are we closing it? Cause I thought we weren't gonna close out completely because we have to come back into open session.
Correct. You'll close this, the open meeting, go into a closed session and then, um, come back into open session.
Okay.
To adjourn.
Okay, what time is it? It's eight oh four. Okay.
And you'll need a, um, a vote to close the meeting. So you'll need a motion and a second and then a roll call.
Okay. Statutory authority to close session. This meeting will be closed under general provisions, article three dash, three zero five B to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Motion to go into closed session.
Commissioner Given, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Givens. Is there a second?
I second Commissioner Amashay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, we'll do a roll call now. Ward one?
Aye.
Thank you. Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three, aye. Ward four? Commissioner Given.
Commissioner Given's aye. Commissioner Given's aye.
Thank you. So it has been prop- properly moved and second. Um, Commissioner Etlard Jury is absent from the meeting. We will now go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
So after everyone comes off, I will sign off and, um, you'll have control of the meeting.
Okay. Um, can you send me that form again? Cause don't I have to read it again to come back into open session?
Yes, ma'am. Um, let me just look at it real quick. Chief, I need you to sign off.
Okay. All right. I don't think I need that anymore. Okay. Does Artis still have co-hosts? Or yes, okay.
She does. So, um, I'll send you, you want me to, I'll email you the form?
Yeah, cause I have my email open. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I will leave the meeting and, um, if you'll just record your time, so that's all.
Okay, I'm gonna write it down.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you. Okay, Artis, can you do me a favor?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to pause. I wanna pause the recording since we're gonna be discussing personnel.
Uh-huh.
Somehow the recording messed up and, and the whole meeting got wiped out. So, oh, I don't wanna mess it up again. So. Can you take care of that?
You want me to just pause it?
About this Zoom, you have so many dig on screens open. It's hard getting to everything. Goodness. Need to close that. Make sure that I have.
We are recording again.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. It is now eight twenty-one P M. We are now back in open session.
Just say that we were talking about a personnel matter, I think.
Yeah, that's, I was just about to say it. During our closed session, we discussed the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction and any other personnel matter that public individuals. So, we are now back in open session. We have ended our closed session. And that there is no further discussion, I now ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Commissioner Given, to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, was that Artis?
It was me and.
And, okay. You guys are sound, starting to sound alike.
Oh, one thing, like, uh, is, is a notice gonna go out so townspeople can come to the thing on Thursday?
Um, I know Ms. Barbara checked with Mr. Um, Best in regards to making it, making an announcement about it. And Mr. Best said that we don't have to announce it because we're not gonna be discussing any policy.
Oh, so we just listen, basically?
Yeah, we'll just, it's just a presentation, basically, I guess. And so he, he told her that we didn't have to announce it. Um, okay, did. Oh, let me, let me take the vote. Um, Ward one?
Aye.
Thank you. Ward two?
Aye.
Thank you. Ward three, aye. Ward four?
Commissioner Given's aye.
Thank you. Um, at large Commissioner Yuri is absent. Motion passes. We are now adjourned. At eight.
Thank you.
Twenty-three. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.